Good evening, everyone. It's the time and place set for the June 2023 meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'll start down to my right and call the roll.
Anne Beeky, good evening.
Clyde Esprit.
Charlotte Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twing, Director of Community Development.
Nick Gerchowski, interim City Attorney.
Woody Gontina.
Jim Ellison.
And I'm Gary Cusson, the chairperson. All right. Before we start, anything, does anybody wish to add anything to our agenda? Ms. Beeky.
Just an update on the master plan, just a quick comment.
I would agree with that. Can we put that at the end of the meeting, Mr. Twing?
Certainly.
Okay. Now, the first item on our agenda is, per usual, the approval of the meeting minutes. I think everybody's aware that we did receive some communication from the previous petitioner and other parties involved. And so I think as a, as an informative exercise here, I'm going to ask our council to sort of give us an update on that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may. Commissioners, good evening. As you were all copied on that email regarding a communication from an attorney representing two architects that allegedly did not authorize signatures on a site plan that you reviewed and approved from the last month's meeting. I have talked to both that attorney, the attorney that represents Dr. Basha, who also is asserting that they were also not part of that potential unsealed or site plan that may be affected by that approval. However, a couple of things. I have talked to them, they are here, they will take an opportunity to present some comments to at the public hearing. I believe legally, we can still move forward with the approval of the minutes of the May 9, 2023 minute meeting, because those are the minutes of the actions that the board took. And if, as long as they're accurate, despite whatever alleged deficiency might have been with regard to that particular site plan submitted to this board, the minutes are the minutes, and they would still accurately reflect that. I also, in speaking with them, we've discussed the matter. Definitely presents a very unique situation. There is really no, after 23 years of municipal experience in planning and zoning, never seen that issue before, quite frankly. And the interesting thing, there is no legal authority that gives us any guidance on that. But in speaking with both those attorneys, I'm confident we can move forward in a reasonable manner to figure this matter out, to move it forward. You may have to revisit that site plan at some point in time in the future, which is understood by the parties that are present this evening. But nonetheless, we're just suggesting that we pump the brakes, let them place what they need to place on the record this evening. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to try to answer those questions the best I can for you. But the plan going forward would be to, after they create their, their record that they desire to create this evening, that then I work collaboratively with them to come up with a solution to go forwards. And we don't proceed with the project until things are figured out, and this board then revisits that site plan with properly sealed site plans that you can take into that consideration when reviewing that. So I think for procedurally, you can proceed with the minutes. I don't think that's affected by the issues been raised. And keep in mind, I wouldn't recommend any other actions by this board this evening for a bunch of various legal reasons, which I can get into if you so desire. But I have discussed those with the other council, and I believe they're in agreement. And so with that, barring questions in the future, I'd suggest moving on.
Are there questions for council? Okay. Is there a motion regarding the meeting minutes?
Motion to do what?
Well, approval of the meeting minutes, I'm sorry, is next on the agenda, and so...
Did I just hear the attorney say we shouldn't do anything until we hear what they have to say?
We can't approve the minutes.
No, I, my advice was you can approve.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood.
Well, as long as you've reviewed them and find them factually accurate, reflecting what actions or, or in what you did at the prior meeting.
So, so I'm going to comment here before anybody makes motions. In, among lawyers speak, there's something called approving as the form. Those guys know what I'm talking about. There, if there's an order or judgment you don't agree with that, you say, well, that was a dumb decision, or whatever, but that's what happened. That's basically what we're doing. We're saying, if something was wrong here that we need to deal with later, that's fine. But we did approve the site plan regardless of anything else. The question about the meeting minutes is what happened? And I think our, our job here is to say, yeah, that happened. Now, if we end up going back and revisiting it, we can do that, and we're going to, that's part of the procedural rules that we're going to talk about at the end. But by approving the minutes, all we're doing is saying, yeah, that's what happened. That's my view.
Ms. Cusson, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 9.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Is there further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the voice vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Who supported it?
Woody? Woody? Yes. Okay, great. Minutes are approved, and now I'm going to open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items. And I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to come up and address the panel. Please do so. You may state your name, introduce yourself, and give us your, give us your communication.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jordan Siegel. I'm an attorney for the, with the firm of Mattenhauser. I'm counsel for James Seaman and Skillform LLC, which is a, for an architect firm that, much to our surprise, apparently stamped the, the, the site plan with regard to matter SP 23-05-08 regarding 30701 Woodward Avenue. That's parcel 25-07-231-002. That's, that site plan was approved by this body at the previous meeting, as was mentioned by the interim city attorney. I say that we were surprised to discover that we had stamped those plans, because we never did. Those were not plans that were prepared by my clients, they were not plans that were examined or produced by my client, and certainly they were not plans that were stamped by my client. We are in the process of investigating how their stamp appeared, whether it was a digital forgery or some other mechanism by which someone, and again, as we are still investigating who is at fault for this, I don't want to put a name on the record, but we are investigating how that occurred, where that occurred, who's responsible, if there are causes of action, if it has occurred in other instances. Our intention in communicating earlier this week with the board was, and requesting that it be excised from the previous minutes, was simply to say, we want to make it clear that the, that my client had nothing to do with those plans, that anything on the record in, in the city record shows and reflects that, and that if there is an impropriety, it be excised from the record. In discussions with, with the interim city attorney, I agree that the way forward that he has suggested is appropriate. We are going to work closely with the city attorney, with counsel for the owner, who is also here tonight to find the appropriate remedy in this, in this, what I will agree is unheard of situation. And finally, I want to thank the city staff. I sent the, our demand letter to the, the person we believe to be at fault, and the communication to this board at 1:00 PM on Monday. I was in touch with the city attorney by 2:00 PM. I appreciate that the staff is diligently respond, been responsive, and have clearly taken this matter with, with the seriousness with which it's deserved. So I want to thank the council for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Please approach the podium, introduce yourself if you will, and present.
Good evening. I am, my name is Jay LeBarge. I'm an attorney at the firm of Strobel, P L L C. I represent Dr. Basha, Basha Diagnostics, the owner of the property in question. And I want to reiterate what was previously said by the city attorney and Mr. Siegel, and confirm that the owner was unaware of this issue, is taking the matter very seriously. And we are still in the investigative stage at this point, but we understand and are willing to work with the city attorney and work with, with other councils to figure out the best path forward. The owner understands there may be a delay, likely delay, things may be, need to be resubmitted, and is fully prepared to do whatever's necessary to make sure the site plan was compliant and is compliant.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak on this or another topic that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment, and we'll move on to new business. First will be a public hearing on the special land use permit and the site plan of the, let's see, 2009 Belair Avenue. Mr. Twing, please introduce us.
Certainly. You do have a request in front of you to reuse the existing building. The property is owned General Industrial. They are proposing to convert that building into a pet kennel and daycare facility with pet grooming and overnight boarding. There would also be play yards inside the building, as well as to the rear of the building, as you, as you see them on your site plan. The vehicular access to the site is provided through a driveway along the east side of the building, as well as the west side of the building. The problem that staff identified in the report on the west side is there's currently a gate that would need to be removed or, or opened along that west side. And it also appears the property owner to, or the property to the west is using it for their activity, so that would need to be addressed in terms of parking. Also, in terms of parking to the rear of the site, there are four spots that run east-west that staff is recommending that be modified, eliminating two of them and turning two to run north-south along the property line with the other 11 along that north property line. Terms of off-street parking, kennels and animal boarding are required to provide one spot for every 400 square feet of usable space. This building does have some 12,330 square feet of usable space, or the need for 31 parking spaces. On the site plan submitted, there are 24, but as I said, staff's recommending a reconfiguration that would eliminate two more of those, down to 22. Either way, there would be a variance needed from the parking minimum standards. Since this is a special land use, the planning commission first must approve the special land use and then grant permission to seek that variance from the zoning board of appeals. That's an overview of the special land use request. Terms of the site plan memo, I'll just reiterate what some of those items were. Item one would be the zoning board granting those variances to the minimum off-street parking. The gate to the exit driveway in the west should be removed. The reconfiguration of the four parking spots. Some additional details on the landscaping in the front, so that all of the remaining hard surface that was previously used for parking is removed along that way. The remainder of the site plan contingencies recommended are our standard contingencies on all site plans.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Twing? All right, seeing none, I will call the petitioner up for a presentation. Tell us why you're entitled to your special land use.
Excuse me, my name is Brian Gill with TDG Architects. We helped to prepare the site plan application. It is my understanding that this is a property that has been renovated prior to this potential tenant coming in. This is a perfect fit for that particular tenant, and we feel that it's a good use for that particular property. Being a special land use, this is an approved use with that, with that option, is my understanding. And my client feels that, again, this is a perfect use, and we are, in agreement with all the stipulations made, and actually, we've already made the update to all the drawings, and ready to apply for the zoning board of appeals.
All right. Are there questions for the petitioner?
So, did you know this, knowing that there was a possibility that the Royal Oak Animal Shelter would be your next-door neighbor?
No, no understanding of that whatsoever.
I have good news.
Good. We can, we can, we can pet sit next door. How's that?
Nothing further.
All right. Ms. Beeky.
Just a general business use question related to parking as we're working on our master plan and looking at issues such as that.
Yes.
I'm just curious, it appears that the reduction in parking probably doesn't cause any business problems, and I'm just wondering if 24 is still even above what you might need to run that particular business, as far as the business estimates go?
It is above, and when we go to zoning board, we're going to reduce that number to 22 per staff recommendations to reduce by two. The business hours of this particular dog stop are from about 7:30 to 7, 7:30 to 7:00 PM, 7:30 AM, 7:00 PM, and on weekends, I believe, 10 to 4. And it's much like a child daycare, where there's staggered drop-offs and pickups, and staffing are between four and six people. So we feel no more than 10 to 15 cars visiting in any one time plus staff, so 22 is going to be more than plenty. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I'll just a quick follow-up question. Are you going to have any bike parking available for your staff?
We hadn't considered that, but we certainly could.
Big recommendation.
Gontina.
Excuse me, you mentioned you made some updates already. Since it's not on the plan, is the, the plan for the vehicular access to be essentially one-way, all the way around the building, entering one side, exiting the other?
That's correct. And that has been clarified in our, in our updates. Thank you.
Are there questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I think my question may be more geared towards the site plan, but one thing I, I think we need to talk about is, your, your plan for your driveway now come in on the, on the...
East.
East side, you'd come in and go around, and on the west side, you'd come out.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, your building next door, that's, that's therein. Your out is therein.
That's correct.
So, I want to make sure we're not going into a problem of sharing that space.
It's my understanding...
I think, I think the use, as Ms. Douglas said, is a possible potential Royal Oak Animal Shelter. And I think they are talking that area on that alley as kennels outside, docketed, because I see a potential for a jam up there, and no one enters, so...
You have more information than I on that, so I understand the concern. It's my understanding that both property owners are friendly, and that they, they would be able to work out whatever need to be worked out with...
Yeah, I mean, I know both property owners myself. I used to work for one of them, but, but, yes, and again, just in full disclosure, my wife runs the Royal Oak Animal Shelter.
Oh, okay.
So that's, and she also used to own an animal daycare facility for 10 years, so this is something I really versed on. So I say, I may have some site plan questions, but as far as special land use, I think it's a good use for this, for this space.
All right. Are there other questions for the petitioner? Okay, I, I, just a couple. I, Mr. Ellison is way ahead of me on this. I am not a dog owner. I don't know much about dogs, but first of all, let me just say, let me snap myself. I love it when the architect shows up to present.
Well, thank you.
It's the way it should always be, so I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
But the question is, there really isn't any windows here. Is this, is this something that, for an operational purpose, this is, how are the dogs going to get light, or is that, is that something that's okay for dogs?
Again, good question about dogs. I don't know, but there is outdoor play area provided, and...
They don't seem very large.
It's as large as the indoor, as far as my, my understanding, and this fits the business model of dog stop. And to be honest with you, the, the existing building is the existing building, we're just the tenant improvement on the interior. So we hadn't, or my client hadn't discussed the, the necessity for additional windows.
Okay. And, and you, you, I don't know if you've designed these before, but are there standards for the size of dog runs and things like that for, for the purposes you're putting this to?
In this particular case, the site really dictated how long our dog runs could be on the exterior. But on the interior, they do have, dog stop does has a standard size they like to, they like to do.
Okay. And I hear the word dog run, I don't want to belabor this, but I just don't know.
Right.
I'm assuming the dog can run. Is there, is there enough room inside for the dogs to exercise?
This is a really good question. My understanding is yes. Again, I'm not also, I'm also not a dog owner, and I don't know this business very well. But my understanding, this is, this is a duplicate of a model that works in other places, so I'm assuming that the, vetted out the, the proper sizing for all of these.
Okay. And then, thank you. A couple of other operational...
Gary, can I ask a quick question? Are your operators here tonight?
They are not.
They are not?
No.
So you're based on...
This is an operational question.
Sure.
I think you hopefully know the answer. So if it's an overnight, the dogs stay overnight?
Yes.
Are they, is there any human attendance overnight?
I don't believe there is.
Okay.
But I may be wrong.
All right. But the, the people can't come visit in the middle of the night?
They cannot.
And, so, okay, I am curious about that, whether or not this is attended throughout the night.
It's a really good question.
Also, I may have had, oh, and how long, do the dogs stay for weeks if their, if their owners go to Europe, or is this, is there any limitations?
No limitations, as far as I understand. However, I think you'd be an irresponsible pet owner if you left them there for longer than a week or so.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay. Those are, those are my questions that went only to operation there. So, thank you. I guess this is a, this is a special land use, so we have a public hearing, so I'm going to ask you to have a quick seat.
One quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this a franchise?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm, I'm guessing that the franchise, or, or, has standards that you're following?
They do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If you have a quick seat?
Yeah, no problem.
Go too far in case we have other questions for you.
Sure.
I got to open the public...
Thank you.
All right. So I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the planning commission on this request for a special land use? Okay, I don't see anybody, so I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to bring it back to this side of the table for discussion or a motion. Mr. Esprit.
Mr. Ellison.
Yes.
I'm going to give you a discussion, no matter what, yeah. Are there overnight attendants at the animal shelter?
It depends on the operator's preference. It is not unheard of to have the building shut down at 8:00, and then locked and secured without an attendant. Not in particular, when I'm interested in, the overnight person was also the janitor. So the overnight person would come in and have a physical presence in the building, cleaning the building, and then would get out when the morning staff came in. But it's not, in, in the industry itself, it is not unheard of to have the building secured without a human attendant there.
All right. Thank you. All right. That's a good question.
There are a couple of things, to go back to what, windows on the outside, windows, windows do not filter noise. When you've got a daycare center full of barking dogs, windows are not the best thing to have. You can get, by getting some clear stories in there if you're just looking for light, but you're still going to have the noise, so, so they will try to steer away from, sorry my throat, try to steer away from glass or anything that doesn't block the noise. As far as kennels, the industry, there is industry standards for kennels, and the, you know, the four-by-six and the six-by-six, you've got designated in here right now, which are all standard sizes. I notice it doesn't look like you've got provisions for cats, so this is a dog-only facility?
Correct.
Okay, no other animals. Going back to the question that Clyde raised up, how long animals can stay there? They have contracted rates, a day, two days, week, month, but it has been known, and it happened with my wife's facility, people will drop the dog off and disappear. And so you've got a dog that has no owners anymore, and you can't find them. So the, the center gets stuck dealing with that dog. So you do run that problem, but nine times out of 10, people want a good place to take their animal where they know it's going to be taken care of, and when they come back to pick it up after they're on vacation, that dog's going to be healthy, well-fed, and exercised. And, and in looking at this particular plan, I think they've got the building set up to do that quite well. They've got an abundance of outside kennels. I don't, what I don't know, I don't see it here, is what are you putting on the concrete floor inside?
The, on the, in the, do you want me to step up?
Well, yeah, so you'd be on the record, yes, please.
The, both on interior and exterior on the, on the, on the runs, it's going to be turf.
Turf, okay.
But as far as the rest, I believe it's just going to be, we're going to just do finished concrete.
Okay. Your turf, is it going to be padded turf?
I don't know the specific...
I only ask for the dog, it's going to be better for the dog if they're running on a padded turf.
Yeah. In all honesty, as you've worked with architects before at this stage, I just don't know the detail of that.
Education, free, free advice.
Right. Well, I'd like to see it padded, it'd be nice.
Yeah, it's so, but again, it all boils down to the preference of your, of your operators and what they want to do, would they just throw that idea in your head? You can ask them the question.
I will.
Because it's not, it's not all that wise to have your animals running on a hard surface. And I would hope that when you're outside kennels, it would be, it would be grass or something soft so they can get that feel, but again, I'm designing your building, that's not my job.
Good information, though.
Miles, do you need anything else for me?
Any other questions for the petitioner?
All right. Thank you.
Further discussion on this side of the table, or a motion?
I'm with special land use.
Do we have a motion to approve the special land use? Is there a second?
A second.
Second by, I don't know who's first, I'm going to say Ms. Beeky. All right. So we have a motion on the table to approve the special land use, moved by Mr. Ellison, seconded by Ms. Beeky. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Congratulations on a special land use. Now we're going to move on and discuss the site plan. Is there some discussion or questions for Mr. Twing, the petitioner, on the site plan? Although we had some, you, you did do some...
I'm going to get there, yeah. I'll see if everybody else has any.
Ms. Beeky.
I guess related to my parking point, I'll ask the question to, to my colleagues. Is there any interest in asking them to use some of the parking that they probably won't need for some kind of soft surface or environmental increase in trees or something like that? Or better to leave it as it is with the, what they're going to have is 22 in the end? I'm just curious what people think.
Ms. Ellison.
Yeah, from experience, it's not a high parking usage facility. People will come in in the morning, they'll drop their pet off, and then they leave. It's those are, you know, their parking space, 15, 20 minutes max, and they're the same when they come back at the end of this day, pick it up. The only time that would differ is if the, if the, if the operators decide to have a special event. They want to have a, a dog show. I mean, they do that, do Halloween costumes, that kind of stuff, just kind of like a family. That's where you may run into some, some parking issues, but that's very, very rare. The, the traffic will, will be, you have probably employees building this side, I'm going to guess they'll probably have maybe four or five employees, and they've got space around the back to park on that. And so I don't think parking is a large concern here. I just, you know, we can figure out a way to keep some of that space open, so we're not cramming the dogs next door.
So, okay, I just, I'm going to make a quick comment here, because I was out there today, and if you're looking on Google, you see that the front is asphalt. That's not like that anymore. They've already taken that out, they've turned that into lawn. So the whole front section between the sidewalk and, and the building is now a lawn. So you got, you got some permeable...
Yeah, the parking is gone from front, correct?
Yes. Yeah. All right. Further discussion?
Commissioner Douglas.
Well, I'll move approval of the site plan, adding an item, is my number here, eight, that they provide a bike rack? And Mr. Twing, this has the ruling of the two parking, or reconfiguration of the parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay. So with that one addition.
Counsel. Does that include the contingencies as listed by staff?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
And just, I want to clarify, I think what I heard the petitioner say, the petitioner already said, "These are all fine with us, we've changed the plans, we're ready to go."
That's correct.
Okay. Except for the bike rack. Do you support it? I don't know if anybody supports it.
Have we got a second on this yet?
No.
I'll second it, because I got questions. What are your kennels made out of? Are they pre-manufactured kennels, or are you making them in place?
They're pre-manufactured.
Pre-manufactured, they're like a hardboard or block, or, I mean, it'd be a prefab with-
In all honesty, they're hard plastic.
Okay.
With a padded bottom.
Yeah.
And so, they're durable, they're cleanable, that's the main thing.
Okay. And I already asked about the floor material.
If you're going to ask another question-
I got, I mean, I got operational questions, but, you know, it's like, does this franchise, do they have a prohibition against certain kind of dogs?
Not that I'm aware of.
Why don't you come up with, if you're going to, so the question was, do they have a prohibition against a certain type of dog?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, but it is possible. A lot of them do have a prohibition against, you know, pit bulls.
True.
I hate to say it, but they just routinely don't allow them, so, which is a shame, because most of them are pretty good. But, that neither here nor there, I just wanted to ask the question, so. I'm sure I could ask a million more. The playards, what are those going to be, fencing, or?
Eight-foot-high chain-link fence.
I'm sorry?
Eight-foot-high chain-link fence.
So, it's going to be chain-link fence?
That's correct.
Eight-foot?
Eight-foot.
Any tops on them?
No tops.
Okay, you may want to look at that. You may want to designate one of them with a top, because in our experience, we had some dogs that could jump over an eight-foot fence.
Let me amend what I just said. There's an existing canopy structure to that building in which one of the dog runs' exterior will be placed underneath, so technically, yes, they'll be one with a cover.
It's good to have a place that's got a top on it so the animal can't get out.
That is, yes.
So, okay.
Ms. Cantina.
So, I just wanted to confirm something, the kennels that are on the plan there, as indicated, these are single-story, they're not necessarily double-stacked kennels.
They can be double-stacked, and I think that's going to be up to the operator of how many they feel they can house based upon their clientele. So, I think, my understanding is they would fill the first level first, and then is, if they bring in more dogs, then they would have yet another tier if needed.
But the number of kennels indicated on the plan is just for the single row?
Correct.
It's 104 kennels. I mean, seriously, stacking? I've never heard that. You put dogs on top of other dogs?
I've seen it in the literature that they sent me, but-
Okay, I, if I see that, I'm not going to be happy. I don't think that's good at all.
Well, the reason I raise that issue is, again, because the number of kennels indicated on the plan is a specific number.
Yeah, 104.
Which is a single row.
Right.
And so, if they do double-stack, all of a sudden, it's double the capacity, which could impact parking, the number of customers, those sorts of things.
Right.
So, I just want to be clear that what's being approved is what's on the plan.
And I would agree with that, single stack.
What I'm seeing is a single level, there's no indication of a double level.
Exactly.
Okay, we can do that.
All right, any other questions for the petitioner, as long as we got them?
As long as Mr. Ellison is done consulting.
Okay, if there's no other question for the petitioner, and no other discussion, I'm going to call for the vote to approve the site plan. It was a, the vote is to, well, the motion was by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Mr. Ellison, to approve the site plan with the listed contingencies and a bike rack. That's the motion. Okay, I will call for the vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, very good, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm old-school, Gary, I like saying "aye."
You may, but you know, we're going to get to this, the new rule says yes.
So, for the rest of the night, tonight, I can say "aye," but after that, again.
The new rule says yes.
Okay.
Okay, what's next? All right, next order of business is also a special land use in the site plan at 4915 Leifdale Boulevard. Mr. Twing, tell us about it.
Certainly. This site is on the west side of Leifdale, north of 14 Mile Road. It is also zoned general industrial, as the last property was. The petitioner is proposing to convert the building into a fitness center specializing in weightlifting. Staff has determined that in the past, and it could be inconsistent here, that fitness centers are similar to indoor recreational facilities, and we've determined that those are allowed as a special land use in the general industrial district, and so you have the special land use requirement in front of you this evening. One of the issues with the recreational facilities is of determination at the planning commission, by the planning commission, that the lot and the frontage are sufficient to support a fitness center. So, if you did approve it, that would be a determination you are making. Also, that the location is on a road that is sufficient to handle traffic for a fitness center. And we've indicated if the, that Leifdale is a local street with a 40-foot-wide curb-to-curb width. One of the items that we did point out was the driveway access to the site is wide enough that it does allow a conflict potentially with the parking spots that are along the south side of the site, allows you to come in directly, potentially into them. In terms of parking, the requirement there is one spot for every four people that might be allowed in the building under the building code. In this case, fitness centers are an occupancy of one for every 50 square feet. The exercise area is about 3,290 square feet, based on occupant load of potentially a maximum 66. 17 off-street parking spots were the determination based on the one per four. In addition, there's some office space in the building, about 460 square feet, at one for every 225. That would add two more spaces for a total of 19. There are 12 depicted on, parking spots depicted on the site plan. The maneuvering aisle in that parking lot is only 13 feet width, which is, doesn't comply with the two-way movement requirement of a minimum of 20 feet. And so, there are at least two variances that they would need to seek in front of the zoning board of appeals and for parking-related issues. And again, since this is a special land use as part of your approval, it would be a determination that you're granting permission for them to seek those variances. Terms of the site plan memo, the only item other than the standard contingencies would be the ZBA granting those variances in order for the project to go forward.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any questions from Mr. Twing? All right, hearing none, I'm going to call the petitioner forward. Please come forward, introduce yourself, and tell us why you should have the special land use.
Good evening, Andrew Mosse, Mosse and Gorn Associates, 4351 Delamere Court, just south of 14. We're very much in the same neighborhood, and many of the buildings in that neighborhood have the same issue with parking of-
Excuse me, sir, could you speak up just a little bit? Is the microphone on? Is there a red light on?
I don't, the green light's on.
Okay.
I don't know.
The green light's on.
It's hard to hear you guys from back there, too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But, in many buildings in this area have issues with parking, now you hear us, that the parking lots aren't sufficient for the new uses that, as the small steel fabricating shops or what have you move out. Tonight, we're requesting a special land use and site plan approval for a new weight-training facility. The owners, Ashley and Justin Trevito, are here to answer your questions for a new weight-training facility. And as they submitted in their business plan, and they can elaborate on, they provide small private lessons and small groups. So eliminating, you know, we believe in, eliminating the parking issue and eliminating the issue of conflict in and out, as people either be coming in for a lesson, a class, or leaving. And, you know, this, you know, site's a challenge for parking, there's no, no other way to do it. But it's, the parking lot won't have very much traffic, won't have in-and-out traffic at the same time. And I believe for the use that Justin and Ashley are proposing, the parking will be sufficient, and we look for your approval. Thank you.
Questions for the petitioner? All right, I have a couple. Is this already operating? Is, are you under construction or are you operating?
Construction.
Okay.
They have a facility in Claussen.
Okay, and, all right, well, that's, that's all I have for now, because it's a site plan question I have, but, all right, are there other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Ellison?
I noticed the floor plan's all open. Are there any kind of equipment that's going to go in there? Because I'm not sure how barbell system is set up, whether it's racks hold the barbells, and just looking, how crowded is the floor going to get if you've got equipment on it?
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name's Justin Trevito, this is my wife, Ashley Trevito. We both run Motor City Barbell. To answer the question regarding the floor space, so if you go back up to the floor plan, I can explain that for you. So, the main area there, that's the training, our training floor. So, if you see like a garage door, if you see, to, if you're looking at it, I guess, towards the back wall, not towards where the front, front of the building would be, where the stop of the garage doors, that would be weightlifting platforms back. So, when we do weightlifting, we're talking about snatch, clean and jerk, the stuff that you see in the Olympics. We train athletes to compete, to get to national levels and international levels, and hopefully, we can have an athlete that would eventually go to the Olympics, God willing. So, on the backside, so like I was saying, those are weightlifting platforms, that's where all our athletes pretty much would lift when they're coming in. So, like, that's where they would start out, they would do snatch, clean jerk technique work. Back there, there would be six to 10 at most athletes during each session. After that, they would go to the front side of the building. That's where we would have our squat racks, our dumbbells, and all our accessory work. We don't have machines, we don't have, you know, you go to like a Planet Fitness, or Lifetime, something like that, where they just have rows and rows and rows of machines. We don't offer that. So, everything that we do is pretty much all free weights, it's either barbells, dumbbells, kettlebells, or any other odd object that you, that you can think of, that you can pick up and put down, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what I figured. The reason I'm asking is more of a safety concern.
Oh, sure.
Because, yeah, you've got, you've got two doors on one wall, you've got no doors on the other wall, and you got one through the center, so if there were a fire and smoke comes in, I don't want people trying to get out of the building and tripping over some piece of equipment.
Oh, for sure.
So, it looks like you're going to have them spread out wide enough, okay.
Oh, yeah, so a barbell's seven foot.
Good answer.
So, a barbell's seven foot long, okay, so a barbell's seven foot long. The appropriate area for somebody to train with a barbell would be of, excuse me, a eight-by-eight platform, essentially.
Okay.
That's an appropriate area for somebody to train.
Yeah, I just, again, just whatever you do, I just want to make sure that somebody in a panic mode that can't see is going to be able to get out without tripping over barbells.
Oh, sure, yeah, no, so the way that we line everybody, so the way that the barbells are aligned, they're going to be set up so that they're all staggered, essentially. So, there is space for people to exit out safely in north and south, east and west.
You know what you're doing, I'm just asking the dumb question.
All right, any other questions? Ms. Beeky.
I have a question related to people arriving. I mean, do you have any plans, again, for bike parking or other options? Because, again, we always make the assumption, every single person goes by car, but maybe some people would choose not to, which would also help alleviate in terms of space.
Yeah, for sure. So, for bike parking, we have like three or four people that bike right now to our current facility, and they just park their bikes inside, that's no problem. We have plenty of space for them to bring them inside. And when they do bring them, like, they're not all at the same time, so.
We also have several members who will live in the vicinity of the new space, so I've already committed to walking there and, and walkability.
Very happy to hear that, as we work on making it more accessible and walkable in Royloge.
Okay, other questions for our petitioners? Okay, and again, this is a special land use segment, so I'm going to ask you to have a quick seat, and we're going to see if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this. All right, so we'll open the public, what's that?
Remotely.
Yes, we'll open the public meeting on the special land use for this project, and anybody who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, so, is there any other discussion here between ourselves? Questions from Mr. Twing, question for the architect, question for the operators?
I had one question, is the building currently empty? No tenant, there's no tenant in the building right now? Or are you in the building?
There is no tenant.
No tenant, so it's, someone's not moving out, so you can move in, okay.
Right, it was vacant before you got in.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Cantina.
I have a quick question, just more curiosity. Between the front office area and the back, is there an elevation difference of those two floor levels? Because I noticed there's a step up to get from the one-
Yes, there is.
There is, there is an elevation.
It's about three inches.
Oh, because that's what that step's indicating, is that-
Yeah, so that's why we have a little ramp.
Is that a ramp?
It's not tall enough to require a rail, or a handrail, or edging, or anything.
But there is an elevation.
But there is something, yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion, motion on the special land use? Mr. Esbry.
Mr. Casado, I'll move the special land use.
All right, and that would be, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Beeky, okay. So, we have a motion on the table to approve the special land use, allowing the folks to go to the ZBA. Motion made by Mr. Esbry, and seconded by Ms. Beeky. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor say yes or aye?
Yes.
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 Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, we will say congratulations for the special land use, now we're going to talk about the site plan. Are there questions on the site plan or discussion? Okay, well, Mr. Ellison.
Oh, did you? Go ahead, sir. I was just going to say, it's a simple site plan, it's a rectangular building with the amenities it needs, the operating function. I don't see any special problem. I don't have a problem with the amount of parking they've got, so I'm with the site plan as presented.
All right, is there a second?
I was going to add a bike rack to this, beating Ms. Beeky to the punch.
I have no problem with the addition of a bike rack.
In that case, I'll second the motion with the added bike rack.
With the contingencies, correct?
Yeah.
The motion includes the contingencies.
Contingency of a bike rack, yes.
Just needed for the record, thank you. All right, is there a discussion?
I mean, these are athletes, they're likely to ride their bikes.
Actually, it looked like the petitioner was about to say something, so I wanted to hear what you had to say.
Well, in this case, where we have a big warehouse, it's just more convenient for members to bring the bike inside.
Oh.
They don't have to lock it.
If I may, did you step out?
She might have stepped away.
Oh, you stepped out.
Oh, yeah, you stepped away.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
We had a discussion about this, and in their Clausen facility, they park inside.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Indoor parking, premium bicycle park.
Heated, cooled.
Okay, can I remove the bike rack suggestion?
Well, you can say, you can drop your support and I'll remove the bike rack.
Okay.
Okay, so drop your support.
I dropped my support.
Okay, I'll take that. The bike rack contingency off of my motion.
Okay.
Is there a second, Mr. Ellison?
I'll second it.
All right, there you go. Very good. Okay, further discussion, I guess this may go to the architect. So my question is, this is a small maneuver lane of 13 feet. And these are people who like to lift weights. I assume there's going to be some F-350s coming in. I don't want to make any assumptions.
Mostly minis, right?
Yeah, a lot of people are conscious of it, so they drive actually.
What's that?
I'm probably the only one that drives the largest vehicle.
I'm just wondering, I mean, at 13 feet, do you have any experience with this at your other place? In terms of the, that's a very tight maneuvering space.
So at our current location in Clausen, we actually share a parking space with a landscape company. We haven't had any issues with them at all, and the parking lot is actually the same size where we're at right now.
With that size of maneuvering lane?
Yeah, there was, yep. And in Clausen, for some reason, they didn't have parking lot lines or anything there. It was just an open lot. So all our members, all just, it all worked the way it was. There was no issue at all with parking the way it was.
Do you usually, do you expect to fill up 12 spaces at a time?
Definitely not. And then also too, as we noted, Leetdale is a very wide street, has plenty of street parking as well, even if it came down to that case.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Welcome.
One thing I just noticed, I'll ask Tim, is there provision for a dumpster or trash receptacles?
There's no requirement for a dumpster. The only time you're required to have a dumpster is if you generate a certain volume of waste, and I wouldn't expect that.
Yeah, how are you dealing with your trash now? Just trash cans on a trash day?
Yes.
And that's sufficient? You never?
All these big men.
And women. No, we don't really generate more waste than a typical household would. And we've already gorged with sacra to get recycling receptacles as well. And they would just be stored in the building.
Dumpster enclosure would be a waste of a parking space, so I don't think we'd need one again. Okay.
Ms. Beeky?
I just wanted to make a comment again relative to safety and such. Then I know what's on the books is the 20-foot maneuvering wide driveways. And this is more common to ourselves than them. But something that's narrow causes people to drive much more cautiously and slowly. And so actually, a little bit of narrowness goes a long way for safety in terms of people just being more cautious when they come in and out. So I don't see that as an obstacle.
All right, thank you for that comment. Any other comments, questions? All right, I think we have a motion on the table from Mr. Ellison to approve the special, or approve the site plan with the contingencies seconded by Ms. Beeky. If there are no further questions, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say yes or aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, congratulations. Look forward to you moving in and having a successful one.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Glad you have indoor parking. All right, next item on the agenda is the revised rules of procedure for the Planning Commission. I suppose we should turn to counsel and say, is there anything further to add? You have made some changes. Would you like to introduce us to where we're at with this?
Sure, at the last meeting, there were several discussions regarding desired changes. And one of the changes that was recommended by me, those changes were made. They are presented to you. The changes are reflected in the memo from staff. If the Planning Commission is satisfied with all the updates and changes, now the, what is this, the third round? We're revisiting this. You presented with a resolution to adopt the rules of procedure as presented. If you want to make additional changes, and you can ferret those out tonight, we'd recommend that you still adopt the amendments. And if those revisions be incorporated into the resolution, if you have additional changes.
All right, does anybody besides me have comments? Okay, I do have some comments and questions. And it's apropos to, I was triggered to do further review here. And I have a question about three words, and they are reconsider, rescind, and rehearing. And when I look at the rules, two of them are new rules that have been edited here. And they're on page five of 12, and they are section 413 I and J. And I just want to make sure I understand the rules. I don't know if I need to change them or recommend a change, but I want to know what the difference between a motion to reconsider and a motion to rescind is, and how those are different here. And I also, before you answer, just a curiosity, if somebody makes a motion, it gets seconded. It's on the table, we vote on it. Once we vote on it, is it still a motion? Because the word here used is to rescind a previous motion, to reconsider a previous motion. Is it a motion anymore, or is it a decision?
It's a decision. The motion allowed for the decision to be made. And that's where your rescinding would come in.
Yeah, so perhaps we want to look at that and change it to a decision. But I also want to know about the difference between the two decisions.
It's still identified as the motion.
Well.
A motion was made, I mean, if you look at our minutes, it's weighted to there. It's a motion was made by so-and-so and voted out and passed. So it was still referred to as a motion.
It's a motion that passed.
Yeah, at the end of that, decision was made on the motion. But it's still referred to as it was motion number five or whatever it was. And so it's just, it's a way of keeping consistent, even though the motion resulted in a change, in a decision. So now, go forth, whoever is in charge of turning that decision into action would move on that decision that was based on that motion.
Okay.
The rules is not, is not simple.
The word can be, either word would work because a motion could pass or fail. So even a motion that fails could still be reconsidered.
It was still a failed motion.
But it could be reconsidered, that's.
It doesn't need to, it's a failed motion.
Well, somebody, but.
A rescinding of a motion takes it off the table totally and it's gone. You got to reconsider. It's a two-step process. If you want to reconsider a motion, you got to vote number one on the motion to reconsider that motion. And then you got a motion to act on that motion again due to the reconsideration.
Well, that's what I want to know about, because.
Because I think there are, there are three different meetings.
Yeah, if you look at I and J, I just want to make sure I understand what these mean because we might need to exercise one of them.
Okay, where are you at, Gary? I'm sorry.
Page five of 12, I and J, 413 I, J.
So I have a question based on what you guys just said.
Sure, go ahead.
So if you were to reconsider a motion that a decision has already been made on, so there was a motion, a second, a vote, it was either a pass or failed that motion. So a decision has been rendered. If you reconsider the motion, does that automatically negate the decision that was made with that motion?
No. You put a motion on the table to reconsider, then you've got to vote on the reconsider. Do you want to reconsider that motion or not? Yes or no? If you do want to reconsider it, okay, if you've put a motion to reconsider and you agree to reconsider, now you're back to the motion again. The motion is presented as it would have been the first time it was passed. This is a motion to do this, 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 and this. Okay? And you can either vote it up or vote it down. If you vote it down, then you got a clean slate. You start all over again.
So that makes sense to me when we're talking about reconsidering, but the chair brings up a good point. If you're rescinding a previous motion, a decision's been rendered. If the rescinding is only dealing with the motion, what becomes the status of the decision?
If you rescind the motion, it's the same thing. You just don't have it, you don't.
I'm going to say, let's hear it in council.
He's the final word, from my understanding, in 13 years.
The record should reflect, I'm handing the chair the Bible of Robert's Rules of Order for him to answer his own question, because it's approximately, I don't know, 100 pages on those two issues.
Oh, okay.
I will try to kliffen out it the best I can for you. I just had it, and now I lost it.
Well, let me jump in real quick too, because we took out all the references to Robert's Rules of Order. There's nothing in here any longer that references Robert's Rules of Order because we got into a whole discussion about what parts and what parts didn't apply. So the intent here is not to rely on Robert's Rules of Order. So my suggestion is you throw the book away and simply read what's here. And so the intent is simply, is again, I think some of the wording that's in there is, if you're going to reconsider, you have to do it at the same meeting. That's the issue. To rescind, you've got, it'll be at a prior meeting sometime later. To me, having done this, that's the biggest distinction, is when they occur.
May I please?
Yes.
Thank you. So rescission or rescind or amend something previously adopted? I think that's the word that's escaping maybe the chair when you refer to previous motion with regard to rescission. So rescind or amend something that the board previously adopted denotes that you're doing that at a subsequent meeting. That you're rescinding an action that you approved by a motion at a previous meeting. Whereas, I agree with Mr. Twing, that a motion to reconsider a previous motion has to be made at the same thing. And again, maybe we're splitting hairs on the language with regard to motion versus adopting or action taken. Maybe those are the words that would be maybe, because you're right. Once you've made a motion and voted and adopted it, and then you move to reconsider that previous action, you've already taken action on that motion, so it's no longer a motion, it's an action. So I guess I get what the chair is saying, that maybe the word motion should be action or adopted. But action probably is the proper word to be there. And again, these are probably, even though we took reference out of Robert's Rules purposely based on the previous discussions with this board, they're still based off in general the Robert's Rules. And that's what staff took these from in basically copied paste. But if you want to consider changing the word motion in those two sections to action, that might fit better, and I think that addresses your concern.
Only part of it, only part of it, because first of all, I agree that we should not worry about Robert's Rules of Order. When we bring these into our own procedures, we can clarify them the way we need them clarified. And what I was mostly concerned about here, and I think Mr. Twing answered in part, it does matter because there are two different procedures here. And so what I think I hear is a motion to reconsider after something's been adopted can be done at the same meeting. If you get past that and you're at a different meeting, now you can make a motion to rescind, but you have to follow these procedures if you're at a subsequent meeting.
Agreed.
Okay, I would suggest we put that in 413J, that a motion to rescind a previous action can be made at a subsequent meeting, blah, 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 blah. Mr. Ellison?
And look, you have the definition of the word motion. Okay, it's a noun and a verb. In this case, it is noun, it's a formal proposal put to the legislature or committee. It's example, the head of our committee made a motion that we rewrite the Constitution. Okay, that's as a noun. As a verb, proposed for discussion and resolution in a meeting or legislative assembly. Resolution, motion by so-and-so proposes, so it's working as an action.
Okay, but it's a proposal. I'm not so concerned, I brought up the word motion, and it probably is better to be clarified somehow. But I would let counsel do that.
I'm splitting hairs only because I enjoy arguing with you about it.
But you understand, the other point I make is, these are two different procedures. So we need to know when they apply.
They are, because as I said before, to me, a rescission, you rescind a motion, you kill it. It's gone, okay? As opposed to reconsider, the motion is to reconsider. You're asking the body to reconsider, you're putting a motion to reconsider. So you got to vote on that motion to reconsider. If that is approved, then you go back to the action that you, that that motion enacted. And then you've already, so you've taken away the ability to not do it. So now you've got, the motion is now alive again, just as you've never voted on it. You put that motion, the action motion, on a table, and you can say yes or no. You get the same vote back, and then, but you've got to ask permission to bring it to the table to reconsider it.
Yes, at the same meeting.
As opposed to a rescission, I think you can just, Nick, help me if I'm right. I think a rescission, you don't need to ask that permission.
Actually, there's a whole procedure in the rescission here, that's what I'm saying. You have to give notice that you want to rescind or get two-thirds.
If you give notice, it only requires a majority. If you don't give notice and you bring it up at that meeting, it's two-thirds of the board.
Yeah.
So that's the distinction you're making.
Yeah, that's a different procedure.
Well, but it's still a motion to rescind, it's just how the vote has to.
Yeah, so that's what.
And there are rules about if, you can only rescind something. If you approve a site plan and they've already got building permits, you can't rescind.
Son, yeah. It's got to be at the next, I used to understand as being at the next scheduled meeting, the next time the body meets.
That's correct, and I would suggest we clarify it. Because that's, let's say, let's just say, the two petitioners come in here and they're talking with their counsel, and the decision of everybody is that we don't want to use that site plan because it had the wrong seal on it. It's hypothetical because we don't know that. We're going to have to exercise the rescinding, not the reconsidering.
It's got to be at the next meeting.
Right.
So you can wait for the next meeting, or you call a special meeting for that purpose.
Understood, but that would be a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Cantina?
So again, from my dense mind, just one clarification. A successful motion to reconsider essentially reopens any previous action that was taken.
Exactly.
A successful motion to rescind essentially negates any previous action that was taken. That's the primary difference between the two. To your point, Chair, the timeframe is stated in I, but I agree with you. It should be clarified for the other procedure, which is to rescind in J, because it doesn't.
Right, right.
I agree with you.
I is clear, when it happens, J is not, to me.
And I apologize, I stepped out again for a moment. Did I miss, did we discuss what constitutes prior notice?
No.
So is there a timeframe for prior notice? Does it have to be on an agenda?
If, assuming J is at a subsequent meeting, that means there is some time passage. So it's a pertinent question, is that, what is the notice period? Can I give notice the day before or a week before?
I'm finding it right now.
What's that?
I'm finding it right now.
All right, definition of prior notice.
Yep.
Here comes the rain again.
Oh, boy.
So I'm going to say that I think it's clear, the question's clear though, for our counsel to sharpen this up a little bit, because it is going to probably maybe come up, so. That would be my recommendation. The rest of it, myself, I'm fine with. It's just that I would like to see clarified.
And I, oh, somebody's eager to talk.
Not really, because, you know, I don't know if any of you have ever read these. It's pretty impressive, even for a legal scholar such as myself. But the term "previous notice" or "notice" as applied to necessary conditions for the adoption of certain motions has a particular meaning in parliamentary law. A requirement of previous notice means that announcement that the motion will be introduced indicating its exact content as described below must be included in the call of the meeting at which the motion will be brought up, or as a permissive alternative. If no more than a quarterly time interval will have elapsed since the preceding meeting, the announcement must be made at the preceding meeting. So no more than a quarterly time interval will have passed, elapsed since the preceding meeting.
Three months?
Three months.
Three months. We're putting that, putting the quarterly thing aside for a moment. Maybe I suggest that we clarify that prior notice, that prior notice means it is added to the agenda at which it's to be rescinded.
I'm going to respond to that. I think that's an excellent idea.
Huh?
I think that's an excellent idea.
I agree.
Thank you.
And by the way, the term is prior notice, not previous notice. So you may be looking at the wrong part. Our word is prior.
Who appointed this lawyer to this committee?
Like I said, some people get accused of being a document weasel, but I don't know if I'm in that category. All right, is that the sense of the committee here? That we send our attorney up just to do some tweaking on that and give us, declare when J happens, when I happens, and let it be known that the prior notice requires it be placed on the agenda of the meeting?
And if I may add, I agree with.
Nick, I kind of read your face.
But I agree with the language suggested earlier that J begin, a motion to rescind a previous action may be made at a subsequent meeting.
I would agree with that myself. Ms. Beeky?
My question is similar to the agenda that we approved at the beginning of the meeting. Would it be useful to approve all of this except those sections that are going to be rewritten just so that it can proceed in terms of cleaning it up at this point? Or do you want it to stay like this and then just work on those sections and still come forward? It might be a little bit easier if the rest of it is agreed upon, just to see that we're making progress.
It's up to the board.
Oh, no, I'm not asking you, I'm asking the chair.
Oh, sorry.
And the board.
And make a motion and see what happens.
Yeah, it seems like it could happen either way, so.
I don't have that many comments about the text, so I'm asking the people who are commenting on the text more.
Well, actually, I belong to your mindset, and Mr. Casado, city attorney, let me take a bite at this apple. I'm going to make a motion to adopt the rules of procedure as presented by staff and counsel in their entirety, with the exception of 4.13 items I and J for further clarification.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Cantino. All right, any further discussion on this? Hearing done, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor say yes or aye? Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, very good. Motion passes, we've adopted the new rules of procedure with I and J to be revised. Okay. Next item on the agenda, was added to the agenda, and that is, when is our next master plan update? Does anybody know? Mr. Twing.
Yes, it's scheduled for your July meeting. There's probably one other item on your July meeting. I believe the intent at that time is for DPZ and McKenna to give you the results of the Shret, provide an overview of what they've heard there, and what the status of what they put together out of the Shret, get your input and concurrence that they're heading in the right direction, and then proceed from there. If they're heading, if something needs tweaking, or something needs to be addressed further, that would be the meeting that I think they're going to be looking for some direction from the Planning Commission. So, July would be the meeting, and as I said, I believe we only have one other item that'll be on that agenda, so you can spend as much time as necessary to get through that.
Ms. Beeky.
I just wanted to make a comment. At the end of the Shret process, there was a presentation, which should be, I think, on our website by now, which was kind of the conclusion and overview, which was a slide presentation and some comments, and I just suggest that perhaps people take the time to watch that overview as well. And if I understood correctly, they're going to both use the information from the Shret, as well as the other research they've been doing, to give us kind of their, where they're at now, so it's not just the comments in the Shret, but rather the whole analysis of, you know, all the different aspects that have been, are going to be incorporated, and looking at the whole population and that sort of thing. Because, of course, even in a Shret, you know, that's only some of the people that can make it to that. But the short, it's about, what, maybe 35-minute presentation at the end, I think, is worth walking, yeah. Worth watching, so I'm just suggesting that to everyone.
All right, all right. I think that's the end of our agenda, except before we, before we seek an adjournment, does any, do any of the planning commissioners or staff wish to make any statements, questions?
Well, other than your items earlier, where you're holding off on an item that's been approved, I will, I will get some communication from the City Attorney tomorrow that indicates such. In the past, where we've had disputes between private properties, we've required them to litigate it, get a, get a court order to tell us to stop proceeding. So, that's a little bit of my concern. In the past, we've had architects that haven't got paid that want to come in and ask for their plans and drawings back. Once they come across the table, they're mine, they don't belong to anyone any longer. And so, we've dealt with them in that fashion, is they don't, they don't belong to anybody other than us. So, we've, we've kind of gone that route. We had in the past, several years ago, somebody used the seal of an architect that actually had passed away, so we knew they had fraudently dealt with it. This isn't the first time it's come up in what we've dealt with in the past, so. I will coordinate with the City Attorney's Office tomorrow about what we put on the record to stop this from continuing. They have applied for building permits. Those drawings have not been reviewed or approved, but generally, they're compared to what you've blessed, and then we pass them on, short of any sort of action from there. They haven't proceeded that far yet, they need revisions to them, so we'll get that in the works. In terms of going forward, again, I'll talk with the City Attorney on how they want to proceed, but this was as a simple site plan. If they simply come back with the same site plan and have an appropriate seal on it, or a legal seal on it, I don't see the need for it to come back, because you would simply be blessing what you've already blessed, and you have no basis to turn it down, dealing with a seal. So, I just wanted to throw out my initial thoughts to you on where this would go, because it is, again, a dispute between two parties that seem to, you know, anyways.
Tim, were these drawings stamped and sealed incorrectly, or were they just?
Well, there are seals on them, the architect.
They are sealed, so sealed incorrectly with an architect that wasn't given.
Well, I wouldn't use the term incorrectly, they're sealed. The architects are indicating that they were fraudently sealed, they didn't seal them, they didn't review them.
Okay, now, I guess where I'm ultimately going, so these were sealed drawings, correctly or incorrectly, doesn't matter, if they're sealed drawings, and they came in for plan review. I remember correctly, ages ago, a plan review did not need to be sealed.
For me?
To submit something for the Plan Commission to review, it didn't have to be sealed. It didn't have to be sealed until building permits.
They are sealed.
No. As far as getting something in front of the Planning Commission, do the drawings need to be sealed?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I guess my question, then, is, from a jurisdictional standpoint, we as the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan in special land use. The site plan is a site plan, to your point. Our jurisdiction isn't necessarily to gauge the validity of the seal placed on it. So, does the, you know, the ultimate authority over this issue really go to the Building Department for their final review when looking at building permit? Because I would think that that department and the building official has the jurisdiction to validate whether the seal on the drawings, or any engineering associated with it, is appropriate.
There's numerous, there's probably, the majority of cases, the architect seals a set of plans that comes before you, isn't the same one that submits them to the Building Department.
Right, so my point being, that's not part of our.
This particular case, they could get them sealed by somebody else, that's fine, and they'd move on.
Which would still really have no bearing on the action that we took.
Right.
Right? So, I guess my point being, I'm not sure, I think I agree with you, I'm not sure that we would need to see it again. I think this is something that could be dealt with by the Building Department in their review for building permit, as to whether or not the documents presented meet the criteria for permit. Our action, it met the criteria for the action we need to take. Part of that is not judging whether the seal is appropriate, or anyways.
So you may or may not see it.
I can say more, but I won't.
Other comments? Ms. Beeky.
Just one other comment, I guess relates to the land use. Just, the Detroit Zoological Society, of course, does a lot of conservation, and they're starting to work on a three-year plan to increase their regional engagement with conservation, and a lot of municipalities were engaged today with a discussion there, and so it's just interesting, something that relates to both our Sustainable and Climate Action Plan, as well as the Master Plan in terms of cooperation. And since the zoo is such a big part of the land that is contiguous with us, if not partially in Royal Oak, I just wanted to mention that, because I think it's something, a good partnership to look forward to in terms of conservation and better land use regarding sustainability.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Because I'm going to go up. Okay, my turn.
There he goes.
Here I go, you know, you know what's coming.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I just, I just want to address this, we've had this issue in the past, but this, assuming a seal comes before us that is fraudulent, and is not a seal that's put on the drawings by the licensee, who's the person responsible charge, whose professional, learned, educated, tested, and licensed judgment is embodied in those plans, it's my opinion that we don't even have discretion to approve that. And the reason is, because we get our power in this commission from the Zoning Enabling Act, which is a state statute. And that state statute says, number one, if you have a special land use, Planning Commission, thou shall require a site plan. If you have a PUD, thou shall require a site plan. And the other aspects of state law in the Occupational Code say, if you submit a plan to a governmental agency, a political subdivision of the state, thou shall have a seal of a licensee, an appropriate licensee, an architect for architect's plans, engineer for engineering plan, and if you submit one that is somebody else's seal, or an expired seal, or without a valid seal, it's a crime, okay? It's a crime. But for us, we are charged with protecting public health, safety, and welfare, look it up, and we have a duty, if somebody comes in here who's a fraud, and we find out about it, or we learn about it, I think we have a duty not to approve that, and I would never approve that if I had known, if I had known that that was a seal that was not affixed by the architect, I would have definitely voted against it, and if it turns out that's what happens, I would be in favor of rescinding it. It's, and there's a value to it, this is not, I didn't make this up, this is the state policy, that we have licensees, doctors, lawyers, architects, engineers, because there's a minimum standard that those professions are supposed to perform, if they're bad architects or bad lawyers, right? But there's a minimum standard, you expect somebody, and I'll just say you've heard this before, other than medical doctors, architects are the most educated, tested licensees there are. They're supposed to come in, they're supposed to evaluate, investigate, appreciate, imagine, do all that stuff that architects do, and we want that done by the time they get here. We don't want to wait, we want to say, oh, it's a simple plan, let the Building Department take care of it. If we want to do our job and do the best for the city, we should expect and require that we have architects and engineers come in and seal the plans that they present us. That's my position.
Right, and I agree, we do, we do require it. These drawings were sealed.
They, allegedly.
Well, no, they were sealed, you can go back and look, they're sealed.
But an invalid seal is not.
But you took an action based on.
We took an action based on drawings that were sealed.
So if someone, the applicant, took an illegal action, I'd agree with you, you should be charged with a crime, and that's what they're going to investigate and do.
That doesn't help the city. I think, I think, you know, I don't want to get into debate with you.
But to go back and rescind it, to go back and rescind it, he's just, the petitioner is going to get a new architect, and get an architect to seal it. And if you bring it back to here, you're going to turn it down again, because they had a fraudulent one last time?
It would be, if somebody just sealed it, it would be fraudulent again.
We wouldn't bring it to you if we knew it was a fraudulent seal.
But, and I understand that, and so you do, but keep in mind, if they took the same plans and took them to somebody else to have them seal it, that's illegal. They can't do that. They have to have an architect assess their circumstance, their site, their facility, and that's what the architect does. They bring their professional expertise to that, and that should bring us and the client a better design, more value, higher property values, all the stuff that goes with better design. And I'm in favor of good design, and better design, we can get it. So that's my position.
Tim, when you get, you've got a resident that comes in, they want to put a 400-square-foot addition off the back of their home. They've done their plans themselves, they're qualified to do this, and they present to the Building Department or Planning Department, without coming in front of us, a set of plans that they drew up for their addition. Do they have to be sealed?
No, but we're talking about two different things. We're talking, in this case, required site plan submittals under the zoning ordinance in the State Enabling Act. Residential properties don't have to, you know, single-family homes don't need it. The zoning ordinance in Royal Oak says if you're over 3,500 square feet, you have to get it sealed. But beyond below that, you don't have to.
We have never, we have never done that before, and so, I'm fine, if this is the way it is now.
Well, we have seen people seal 3,500-square-foot homes, you just don't see it here.
No, I just know, it's never, whether the drawing was sealed or not, was never a criteria that was presented to us as the Planning Commission on a site plan approval.
No, no, it always has been, you've always had to have a seal on a drawing.
Okay.
And if it isn't, we've listed it as a contingency on occasions, because if it's the last item they need to do, if all the other issues are addressed, they have to present that seal on it. But it's always been a requirement.
Okay.
So, I'm persuaded by the Chair's argument from the standpoint of, if a site plan is submitted with fraudulent information, even though we may have taken action on it, realistically, it technically wasn't a valid site plan to begin with, so.
Any fraudulent submission under a special land use, if you give us any documentation that's proven later to be fraudulent, I have the right as a zoning administrator to revoke your special land use. That's part of it, you can just go ahead and do it.
Essentially being, is what I just said.
In this case, it's not, it wasn't a special land use, it was simply a site plan.
Yes, the state statute requires it for special land use and PUDs, and not for just regular site plans, but, so Royal Oak could take the vision, we don't need the seal for regular site plans, but we do have it. So, because we require it, the seal needs to be valid. Any other questions?
Were these plans this evening for the two special land use and site plans? I'm unable to find the seal on them. Were they sealed? I know I'm complicating matters, but I've been looking, and maybe I'm not, again, I'm not an architect or an engineer, I don't see a seal on that. There was a seal on the first one, from a.
Well, the second one, the architect stood in front, the architects on both.
Both of them, hurt here, but again, I'm just, I know I'm complicating the issue because you're debating seals, and I'm looking, and the only seal I saw was from a surveyor on one document, and the rest of them, I'm not seeing a seal. Sorry to complicate matters.
Oh, I don't know what else they did, but I, that's a great point, it should be sealed. It so happened that I was, I'm familiar with both the architects there, so I usually, just you know, I usually look up all the architects and their engineers before we come to the meeting. I didn't in this case, because I was aware of them.
I'm just throwing it out there, since you were discussing seals and requiring them on.
If they didn't seal it, then they shouldn't. But they're both licensed.
So, then legally, from a perspective, what does that do? Does the building?
Again, it's, it's from our end, it's no different than other contingency, you have to show it before you get your building permit. It's like any other requirement, not code.
I mean, I don't want to belabor this point, but listening to Mr. Cassada, and you know, ever since reading that letter yesterday, I mean, that's kind of a shocking letter to get, quite frankly. And it seems to me, and again, you know, talk me off the ledge, it seems like we have the, not just the authority to rescind this, it seems to me that if we're almost witness to a fraud taking place under our noses, we almost have the obligation to rescind it, it seems to me.
But keep in mind, these are all allegations, there's nothing been proven, we're not a court of law, we're not making that decision, it's not our job to make that decision, we receive what we receive, you are presented with what you're presented, and that's their job to determine that in the court of law. And I think that's what Tim was referring to earlier, that a lot of times, we kind of say, well, that's your problem, go figure it out in court, we'll be happy to comply with any orders of the court that pertain to the city, such as injunction, until they figure it out on their end. My conversations with them were such that, yeah, they may proceed with litigation with regard to the alleged fraud, and that will play itself out, but again, if they come in with actually properly sealed plans, what is the next step? Does it come back before this board? Can we do it administratively? And I unfortunately didn't hear that.
My comment was, was where I was leading it to, is, the petitioner was here, or the property owner was here. If, if he concurred, he should have withdrawn his quest. He didn't. He said he was going to go work out a solution, which one of the solutions might be is he gets a site plan that's duly sealed by the appropriate architect. Or frankly, he'll pay these two that he's got sealed, and they'll seal it, and he'll move on.
All right. No, I think that's the clarification.
That's the allegation it's on, is, as Nick said, you're in the middle, and that's why you really shouldn't do anything.
All right. No, I mean, there's a clarification.
The only other concern is if that, if there's changes that are in a resubmitted site plan.
Oh, it'll come back if it's.
So, I mean, there's options, and we will certainly look at all those, and you may or may not see it again, but, you know, it's certainly a complex issue.
What's good about this situation is, we got three lawyers involved working together, and we would expect that that would bear some fruit. Hopefully finding out who did it. All right, any other comments? Is there, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. And I will make a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I, yes. Yes.
Very good, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
I was finally warming up the conversation.